Trustees' regular meeting to order. All of the trustees are here. And then our first item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
Where's Judy?
What?
Judy's not here.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Judy's not here. All our board members are not here. Judy's not here. Thank you very much. I was looking at all the chairs that had been filled. And I was like, okay, we're good.
I was thinking of your stone speaker and I didn't know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is response to public comment. Amy, do you have something?
I just have one small thing. At our last board meeting, a couple of public comments shared some excerpts from a couple of different books. So I just wanted to say one thing when we look at the books or reviewing the book as a whole. So when a passage is read without context, without knowing the plot of the book or why the book's written, it can be very shocking and provocative, but we always are reviewing the item as a whole. And that's as part of our policy. But then that's also in the state statutes when they're on the reverse, when they're reviewing whether things are harmful or not to minors. It also talks about using things in context and evaluating the work as a whole. So just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you.
So the next item on the agenda. I had a, oh, I'm sorry. So The Book Tricks, which is all about like 15-year-old prostitutes, was known disturbed by the fact that it encouraged kids to be okay with their fathers molesting them and encourage prostitutes. I mean, this. Is that really what a library is for? I mean, these 15-year-old girls should see their lived experience so that they'll be okay when their fathers molest them and be prostitutes? Okay, is that all you want to say? Well, it's kind of a question for the rest of the board.
Okay, this isn't what this portion is for. So I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say. Then we'll talk about what we can do with this. Go ahead. Did you have something?
Yeah, I did. I actually, I had a few things. I was just wondering about the library employee that spoke. I forget her name. She was very concerned that there is not a pathway to further her career in the library. And I just, I would think that's not true. That, I don't know how long she's worked at the library, but I would think that that pathway is there to advance. And so that's one thing I was wondering. I agree with the books that Mary Ann Cochran and Viper. I'm not sure if both those books are in our library, but I know we can get them from like Spokane if they're requested. I also think that that's not appropriate for kids in whatever context. And then, oh, Liz Warchester, Warchester. She was asking about the, I believe it was her that brought up what Regina had said about the reconsideration of materials and how it kind of seems like a dead end. If, you know, if there is a way to actually have a book removed. Do you guys remember that for asking that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay. The board meeting could be taken over by this kind of conversations. So, okay, wait a second.
This is, this is comments from last month.
Wait a second, just let me finish what I was going to say. So these are important considerations, and I think we may need to make time for them. And the first place I think needs to be started is talking to the director about the concerns. But then we can put them on the agenda should they need to be an agenda item. And I, you know, this is a loose thing. And I looked at this as a very loose thing, but I know that we could take off and not get the work done that we needed to get done. But the, but the, your concerns have been recorded.
Okay, and this is the very first time I've even used this time from the agenda to respond to somebody. So are we supposed to? Are we not supposed to? I'm truly confused.
I wasn't saying, I wasn't saying that, I wasn't saying that you shouldn't have those concerns or bring them up during this time. What I was saying is to bring them up and that's great. But if we stop and talk about those and they're not on the agenda, then what will happen is the board meeting will stop.
Well, honestly, I didn't say we should have a discussion. I'm giving my feedback on last month's speakers.
Right.
Which is what we're supposed to do right now.
You seem like you think that I'm trying to.
I do feel like you are trying, because it's literally the first time I've given feedback.
I'm not saying, please don't talk. I'm saying, all I'm saying, I was, I thought you were asking for feedback right now. Okay, my mistake. I misunderstood.
Yeah, this is, I feel like I'm shut down sometimes too and a lot of excuses are made. But then you guys are allowed to do the same thing that you tell me that I'm not allowed to do.
Please don't, please let us know if that's happening.
Okay. We're letting you know right now.
Yeah, okay. These items are important discussion items. And they're, they are duly noted. I mean, they're written down, so they're not going to be forgotten. But they are also, it will take over the board meeting and they're not on the agenda.
Okay, well, I would, I don't know, like to put it in the section to be considered, to be discussed. Is there any book that is so bad that you guys would consider it not appropriate for the library?
Maybe we need some kind of, you want a discussion on reconsideration of items? Is that what you'd like to put, have a discussion for? I mean, the collection development policy is coming up in September.
Well, I mean, it just seems like.
Would that be a good time to speak on this?
I'm just really confused. I really thought we were supposed to be able to give feedback from the people that spoke the month before, and that's just what I did.
Did I not let you do that?
No, you tried to stop me, actually.
Oh, I, I am very sorry. I thought what you were going to do, I misunderstood what you were going to do. I thought you were going to start asking the board to have feedback. So I, and this, I think, is the second time I've apologized that I misunderstood. And I really did. And I apologize. Did you say all you needed to say?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've noted those that in the minutes, is that right? Okay, that sounds good. Anything else?
Just while we're on the topic of responding to public comment, that my understanding is that we added it to the agenda to give board members an opportunity to respond to public comment, but it's not to be used as an opportunity to then engage the board in a conversation, because that would have to be on the agenda. That's.
And that's exactly how I took it.
So I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, and I wasn't disagreeing. I was just.
Yes, you've apologized twice, like you said.
Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And we have two people who would like to speak. And our first speaker is Mary Ann Cochran.
These are the 45 Communist Goals entered into the Congressional Record in 1963. Number 24, eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech. 25, break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books. 26, present homosexuality degeneracy and promiscuity as quote "normal, natural, and healthy" by proffering profane and obscene books to children. The Community Library Network and Amy Rota are facilitating the creep of communism into our community through children. At the June 15, 2022 event hosted by HREI and the North Idaho Pride Alliance with CLN on the panel, those who opposed the sexualization of children were described as white supremacists, hypocrites, haters, and book burners. So I'll illustrate with an example of what we oppose. The Infinite Moment of Us by Lauren Miracle, which CLN sees fit to have three copies of, is in the teens section. And as Amy Rota said, that section is for kids as young as 12. The main characters in this book are white, straight teens. She gave me a blowjob behind the workshop. She was wearing a skirt today. He found the hem and slipped his hand underneath her thigh, her ass. He ran his fingers below the lace. His cock strained against his jeans. He pulled back slightly and used his forearm to push her legs apart. He slid his hand beneath her panties again and found the spot he was looking for, heat and wetness, and slipped two fingers inside her. She pulled down the cup of her bra on one side. She cupped her breasts with her hand, lifting it higher. Used her other hand to tap the shutter button on her phone. She hit send texting him the picture. She took his hand and put it under her shirt, stomach, ribs, breasts, no bra. She put her other hand on his jeans, on his dick. Her touch made him hard. As for sex, they were 14 the first time they fucked. He hurt up her body, her nipples hardened. She grew suddenly and undeniably wet. She hooked her thumbs beneath the band of his boxers. They were stuck, caught by the tip of his dick. She bent and took him in her mouth. He moaned and ran moved up and down. When her mouth left his dick, he made a sound. His dick hurt against her, but not yet in her. With his knee, he spread her legs, Charlie thrust into her. This is pornography.
That's pornography, you guys.
Merriam-Webster defines pornography.
Just a minute, I'd like to say something.
Stop, please.
I would really like us to have, I didn't.
You guys get over yourselves and get rid of these books for once and all.
Okay, that's enough.
I'm sick of you guys.
All right, we.
This is disgusting.
We are going to take a break right now until.
No, that's not what I say. You guys are disgusting. Disgusting. How dare you have books like that in the library?
You need to leave.
You need to get your books out of here. And you need to quit, because you guys are a den of perverts. How dare you say, and how do you defend that about context?
Our quote of context.
Yes, oh, you're so civilized, aren't you? So civilized. But you allow things like this for 12-year-olds to read. You guys are really beyond belief. You should be arrested. If we didn't have that special clause in the law, this, you would all be going to jail for providing this kind of stuff. And this is one of thousands of books.
Thank you, that's enough.
Yeah, that's enough. I'm sick of you guys. You guys are disgusting. This little town is full of innocents, and you're ruining it with your smut and your Marxist ridiculousness. You guys are pissed. You're just disgusting.
Go ahead.
Definition of pornography, according to Merriam-Webster, the depiction of erotic behavior as in pictures or writing intended to cause sexual excitement. Label me what you like, but you are porn purveyors to kids, which makes you complicit in the degeneracy and degradation of society, which furthers the accomplishment of the Communist goals.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Harrison Annual Library Report. This is Ani. And Ani, what's your, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name. Okay. Tosia?
Meto.
Meto. All right, and let's go around the, around the table and introduce ourselves. Would you like to start, Michelle? Otisson.
Robinson.
Vanessa Robinson.
Are we going that way?
She knows those guys.
Okay.
You're next.
Regina McCree.
Michelle.
And I'd like to introduce our new circulation specialist, Emma. I've been here almost a year. She was our former intern.
Great. Okay.
I know, I'm gonna move.
Do you know, I don't know if it's gonna bug you, but.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm really glad you could finally come to Harrison after two months. Can everyone hear me? Yeah, is that good? Okay. So my name is Ani. I'm the manager here. I've been here almost two years. And I'm really glad to welcome you here and to share with you what we're doing for our patrons and our community in Harrison. So we recently shifted our new nonfiction books, which are over here, into a single range for better display and signage. Thanks to the new book holders we have for end caps, we're able to highlight an unloved book or the first book in a series to encourage circulation. No sooner do we write up a book talker, a little blurb about what the book is about, that the book is checked out and we have to find a new book and write a new book talker and put it out, which is great. It's very gratifying, because we do get a lot of feedback from patrons, which is really pretty cool. Positive and negative, we want all of it and we'll, you know, go with it. For adults, our fiction and classic book clubs are doing very well. So many members tell us afterwards that they never would have read the book if not for the book club. And even if they didn't like it, they got a lot out of the discussion. I like to joke that the library is the water cooler of the town. This is especially apparent during the winter, when our Saturday morning cocoa, coffee, and coloring turns the library into the town's community center. As long as people's driveways are clear and they can get down the highway, Saturday mornings are spent at the library. Once the weather became nicer, so last month, Saturday mornings became a ghost town, as Emma can also attest, because it was too nice to be inside. But the sense of community remains. And people visit when they have material that needs to be picked up or through meeting friends here for a playdate in the park across the street. The Harrison Library has something for everyone. Now that summer is here, it signals the return of our young gamers. Whether playing individually or as part of a team, it's good to see them back in the library, giggling and singing as they do whatever they do. We've also had some wonderful performers over the past year, from Gary Eller and his wonderful music and comedy and jokes, to Alex Surby, who came to entertain families with magic and fun and fun little things like that. This summer, one of our locals volunteered to teach a class on essential oils. Our adults and older teens are enjoying the monthly classes, taking notes and sharing ideas. On those Fridays, the library smells like a spa. It's very relaxing and peaceful. Picture, anyway. Okay. So the slide should have been a variety of gathering spaces for all ages. Harrison Library has something for everyone. So making learning fun for kids. The Tuesdays here at Harrison Library are all about kids. Thanks to the YS team and especially staff members Amanda and our own Jamie for creating and presenting entertaining and educational activities. We have learned the hard way to remove all the steam kits that are down there during storytime, so the kids can focus on the reading and the craft and not play, playing with the kits and the toy. Afterwards, they actually know what kit they want to play with, so they ask for it very nicely. And we'll bring it out to them and they just sprawl on the floor and play. It's really great. And then laboratory and imagination explorers for the older kids have become even more popular now, because they're outside and who doesn't want to be outside on a nice day? So engaging teens. Most of our teen events have a small but dedicated following. They're open to trying new things like flowering tea while they make fascinators, which are tiny little hats. We have a core group of anime fans who enjoy making origami cranes to decorate the library. We did actually have them out for summer reading. We put them in the staff workroom. Teens and a few adults peacefully like to paint yoga mats. And they tried out different poses afterward. And it's pretty fun to see them out there, contorting, as Emma probably. Chopped and nailed it, brought out the good natured competitive spirit of all the kids who participated. And it was really fun to see them run in, use the microwave, run back out, make their little cakes and whatever else they were doing. And then hoop making that we had for teens was such a hit that we're gonna bring it back later this summer specifically for adults. Because we had so many requests from adults to make a hoop. So I have to figure out when we're gonna do that. So creating connected community. The library continues to be an integral part of the community. Our Northwest Collection back there is front and center to help our visitors and new transplants learn about the history of the town and the surrounding area. We have a close relationship with the Crane Historical Society who's next door. And we sell photo prints and calendars on their behalf. Based on repeated questions by locals and tourists alike, I compiled a list of eateries, which provide to patrons and local businesses, as well as a calendar of town events, which is posted on the city's website. This year, I also wrote a brief section about the libraries of cities. In the fall and winter, we participate in scavenger hunts held during Oktoberfest and Winterfest. The library serves as a warming station for carolers who grace us with a few songs before going on their merry way. In fall of 2021, I added an email newsletter to augment our print newsletter in order to reach a broader audience. In January of 2022, I added a book club newsletter, highlighting each month's reads, as well as new and upcoming releases. I also reach our patrons via the district's Facebook page and the library staff posts to our community Facebook page, which is called Harrison Happening, should anybody be interested. So providing accessible and inviting spaces and welcoming spaces to think, meet, work, and create. So I don't know if you noticed outside, but we have a little bit of a construction zone going. Facility staff are addressing our mini swamp and creek behind the library. Work has been ongoing since water was first discovered under the building last summer. But on a positive note, the cleanup uncovered a cute little water feature back there, which is really great, as long as the air conditioning's not working. So today would be a good day to go back there and see the little babbling brook. We're very grateful for additional outdoor seating. Thank you to a foundation grant. It's that table and four chairs that are out there. It's pretty awesome. And our new shade sale is a welcome respite from the sun. And I don't know if you noticed that before you came in. I don't know what happened. Oh, well, well, this is Harrison about town. So as a happy coincidence, our local Baptist church just happened to have an unused wooden yellow submarine laying around. And it's perfect for oceans of possibilities, summer reading theme. All the kids were having their pictures taken with it during our pirate party kickoff, which was mid-June. And now it's a great tourist draw. For everybody, come to Harrison, go to the Crane Room, get your picture taken. And now, we also have a bunch of little mascots. So as you're walking around later, you'll see a blue whale. Her name is Whalma. And we also have a great jackrabbit. Her name is Dewey. And then for the teen youth, young authors' club, Yak. One of their members crocheted a little yak. And her name is Yaki. For right now, that name might change. And then lastly, you never know what you're gonna come across in town. Our very own Dylan the Dino, versus up. He's an anime, avid anime viewer, library aficionado, part-time dinosaur, and wanders around town, photo bombing, library meetings, tourists. And it's really super fun. So that's the end of my report. Sorry, the slideshow didn't work out. And does anybody have any questions?
I do. And first off, I think one of the pictures was the submarine they had their heads.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did see that. What are the hoops that you were talking about?
So, who loops?
Oh, okay.
So we have the piping over there.
Oh, okay.
And we have a bunch of tape. And you cut it to your own size, because there's specific, you know, from your waist to your shoulders. And yeah, it's pretty cool. And you just make a hoop. And it's really fun. It's good exercise and it's fun to dance around to music.
Nice.
Yeah. So thank you.
The submarine thing is right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Right outside. When I walked in, I'm like, and that is, oh. You can take your.
So, does anybody else have questions, comments?
It feels like, for quite a while, we just did not have a lot of kids. And it feels like there's been a renewal of children.
There has. It's taken like almost a year, I think. We're still not getting the teens. We just can't quite figure that, except for the Young Authors Club. They are amazing. That has grown. We have about eight kids, I think, as Emma does run that.
That's pretty, that's.
Yeah, it's great. She kind of herds cats more than, you know. But she helps them along and it's pretty great. And, but the little kids for storytime has really grown. We have, what, I think, up to 11 sometime?
Wow.
Yeah, so it's great.
Sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. No, Jamie's been wonderful and she's really built it up through advertising, marketing. And I don't know if you noticed that little carpet that's over there, but that little hopscotch really made an impact and brightened up the space. And then we actually have a big blue bean bag, which is in that box back there. And we use that. Sometimes they'll lay on it, or Jamie's to sit on it before reading.
Well, like I said, it's amazing how something like crepe paper and stuff can like define.
Tablecloth.
Yeah, it feels happy. It feels good.
Great. So you came and made a lot of changes, which we don't know about. You want to tell, just kind of give us a.
Sure. So, when I came here, this circulation desk was right here.
Oh.
Which really kind of broke up the flow. And that center divider was farther this way, which really also broke up the space and it wasn't very cohesive. Patrons actually thought this was theirs to use instead of a staff, you know, workstation. So I didn't really change anything here. This was always this way. The youngest books are on the bottom and then it matures as they go up. So that as the kids grow taller, they can reach what they're supposed to reach. And then in the back is where we made the most changes. So our patrons really like things separated by genre. So Western, mystery, thriller, romance. So we did that. We broke out everything by genre. And I think not all the libraries do that. But we found it useful for our patrons, because they would come to us and say, you know, I want a good mystery. I only read mysteries. Okay, let's make a space for you. And we did the same thing with the new books that come in the routers. We also separated those by genre. So people who want new books, new suspense, they go straight to that section. And that's not to say they don't broaden their reading, but they much prefer their, that focus. And then same thing with the movies. We separated those out by genre as well. And that has worked great. It's kind of like when you go to Blockbuster or you go to Barnes &amp; Noble, you expect, people are used to things being genre. So we kind of use that same philosophy here. And I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback. So we'll just keep it the way that it is. And now I'm trying to work on our nonfiction, trying to get it a little more cohesive, not quite so crammed together, because people can't see them. And what they can't see, they don't check out. So we really strive to make, to display books more, to weed out older things that haven't been circulated in four years. Odds are that no one's gonna read it if it's been four years old. And if nothing else, we'll just send it to Hayden or some other library who needs it. And they can maybe get it circulating. The big thing about our patrons here. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. The big thing about our patrons is that they find it difficult to search the catalog. And they come to us for requests and assistance. So we do a lot of readers advisory. And so we know what they read. And we try to get them similar authors or similar movies. Hey, you like Yellowstone. Do you want to watch this? You know, it kind of goes along that way. So it puts the onus on staff a little more than maybe at other branches who don't do as much readers advisory as we do. So we've also created in the back there, we call it adulting. Adultish, adultish. We called it adulting and then we changed to adultish. So it's basically older, young adult material, which is really more suitable for 20-something audience. And that, it was proven, because kids don't check it out. It was the adults that were coming into the young adult section, which is crammed full. And again, as a means of making it more viewable and being able to display more books, we moved them to the back, along with other books that are geared for the 20, 30-something audience. The publishers call it new adult, which is confusing. So that's why we chose adultish. So it's a little more mature theme. It's like post-high school, you're starting college. So it's more mature than your average 14-year-old really needs to be reading. We put it back there and it's flying off the shelves, because the adults love it. And then we also created a separate classics section. And those are also flying off the shelves. And it's mostly YA and adult classics. We also have a kids juvenile-specific classics right here, too. Primarily, they're in the back, under classics. Everybody knows where they are. Some people start at the beginning and just read all the way through all of them, because they're classics. And they love it. We have a lot of adults, which is what spurred us to have a classics book club. So it's not very many people in it, but a lot more people read it than actually attend the meeting, which that's fine, too. So it's not very many people in it, but a lot more people read it than actually attend the meeting, which that's fine, too. That's great. So I mean, that's basically the changes that.
But I haven't been here since this got built. And I haven't been here since fiction. Was fiction?
Fiction was always.
Always, always.
That really didn't change so much.
Okay. But and the kid, the.
The kids has always been right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So I don't know. It just felt like I was able to see it and like, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And this is brand new, the manga anime. This is new. This didn't used to be here. But there is such a desire for graphic novels that we created this. And again, kids love it. You know, it's a way to get readers. If they're not ready for chapter books yet, here's a huge section of graphic novels and then they can work their way to a chapter book.
What's the age range for?
This is also kids.
So little kids?
It's under 10.
Okay.
I mean, it can be over 10, too. But it's a kid.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. It's so this entire area is juvenile. So this whole area is under 11.
The manga and graphic novels, older grades are.
Okay, so graphic novels in general, they're just like, that's the younger.
This is the younger because they're the ones that are reading.
Right.
Like the teens don't really read it a whole lot. Again, the adults are reading, which is fine. You know, we love that, too. Just read.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I enjoy your board reports and the district is lucky to have you on.
For sure. Anybody else, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, honey. And you're certainly welcome to stay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is an action item. So do we have questions or comments?
I had just one small correction. I feel like I should, you know, provide comments other than, you know, good work continues. On the second page of the June 10th, special meeting on the second bullet point at the top of the page, the third sentence, Meyer is misspelled, it just needs an E. And on the two, three, fourth, fifth bullet point, veely noted, she spot checks files and matches receipts to budget reports. I wasn't sure if that was exactly, she's, if that captured exactly what you said, Michelle, spot checks files. Aren't you, aren't you double checking the checks or? I don't know.
I am. It did, I thought it read kind of odd, too. Yeah, no, I look at all of it.
Right. So you're not, so I don't know. If everyone else knows what that sentence means, then, but I think what it, what you were saying.
I always go through the checks. Occasionally I spot check receipts and match. I think that's where the confusion is. And when I'm comparing, like Janelle does a printout and she does her, her interpretation of the, the statement. And then I get the statement because I'm the only one that can open it. And I, and I, while I examine all of that, there, I cross, I spot check back and forth between those particular, but only after I've gone over the statement and.
I get it because you, you just use the term spot check. So this is used as a verb.
I think what I usually say is random.
Okay.
Because that's what my baking sense is. Random's good.
Right. Yes. I know, I get exactly what it is that you're saying that you do. You, you kind of like randomly double check things. But this, I think it's the term spot check that was kind of throwing me.
Kind of odd.
But anyway.
Would you prefer random? She randomly, I know she reviews the statements as a whole. We could also add that part.
Yeah. Should be two separate statements because it makes it sound like I'm just kind of randomly flipping through the, the statements. And that's not what I do.
Right. And I think there was another part there. You say you review the statements as a whole, but then you are doing some periodic checking to just make sure.
Exactly. But isn't there a word for that?
I don't know.
That's funny because I, I feel like spot check covers a lot, but it also could be taken as a super vague term.
It looks like kind of.
But I, to me, spot check is kind of thorough. When I spot check, it's thorough, so.
And maybe if, is that one word? Like, and I'm sorry, you guys, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I just, spot check is not a term that I, is in my head.
What about the way, whether she reviews the statements as a whole? And then what was the second thing you wrote?
Well, then we could, I think the word spot check was used in the meeting.
Yes.
Really?
Oh, I'm sure it was.
Yes.
So you know, it's about four times right now.
Right in front of me.
Michelle, just, but we could add on to it. I think what was missing is that part about she's reviewing the monthly statements and then does spot checks.
Okay. So that's good. That works. Random.
Yeah, random sounds bad.
And I think random is good.
That's interesting.
I think it's good in the, in the financial world and that you're not doing it in a patterned fashion.
Yeah. I get that.
So that you can.
Yeah, it's, it's your double checking is essentially what you're doing, but that was, that was the only changes I had.
Okay. Anything else? Down the Friday, June 10th, June, where it says roll call. My name is spelled wrong, R A.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, I just said my name was spelled wrong.
Oh, your name was spelled wrong because I was looking, I only heard the roll call.
It is on the 14th, Tuesday, June 14th meeting also.
Yeah, sure is. Anything else? Anything else on any other items in the consent agenda? If not, go ahead.
Oh, I will move that we accept the consent agenda with changes.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the consent agenda with changes. In favor?
Hi.
Oh, I forgot to ask for any more discussion. Oops. But probably not. All right. Opposed, anybody opposed? Okay. All righty. And then the next item on the agenda is, are the community library network's financial report?
Yeah, I had, I guess, some peripheral questions.
Okay.
It said that we received grants from the CLN Foundation. I was wondering who's on the board for the CLN Foundation? I don't know.
Sure. So right now we just have two board members. Tom Lean is the treasurer and he came and spoke to us a few months ago. And we've been trying to recruit a third board member because the bylaws of the foundation do state that we should have at least three. So it's Tom Lean and Leonard, I'm not able to say his last name. Leonard Cockahan is the secretary. We did lose the president a few months ago to Boise. Both of those individuals, I think Tom's been on the foundation more about four to five years and Leonard about two to three.
Okay. And the other question is, what the grant from the Idaho Community Foundation for Forever Idaho North? It says that the CLN one was a picnic table, but what was the one from the Idaho Community Foundation?
Where is that, Rochelle? Oh, I see. Okay.
Oh, right. Okay. So that was a grant that a staff member from Post Falls and actually Christie, our communications coordinator, had applied for, and I believe it was for hygiene hamper kits. Was that just specifically for Post Falls, Christie, or for the district?
It was for Post Falls and Hayden, but depending on needs of others, I think they were also looking at Apple, too.
Okay. And we've had hygiene hampers at both of those locations for some time. So this was a grant to continue to be able to continue to purchase the supplies for those.
Can I ask a little follow-up question on that? If, is that like the feminine hygiene in the bathroom and stuff? Has, has that been going well or at any location is, you know, it being, you know, people taking too much or?
I think at Post Falls, they did change where they put it so that it wasn't just, I think for a period of time, it was no longer just in the bathroom. So sometimes they would pull it out for teen programs or have it, you know, in Whelma's realm or specific areas. Since at least the original hygiene hamper there was, I think teens were the target audience for that. So they were trying to, but then we also had teens that were the ones misusing it.
Right.
So I think now that they've moved it, yeah, there hasn't, it's been used more for its attendance.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions on the financial reports? Comments? Concerned? Okay, then I would certainly entertain a motion.
I'm gonna fail hard again. Okay. I move that we accept Community Library Network June 2022 financial statement.
It's been moved, it's been moved to accept the Community Library Network June 2022 financial statements. Is there any more discussion? The reason it's financial statements is the first page is basically the income statement. And then then she attaches a balance sheet, too.
Okay.
You know, and so I always.
And it says an S at the end. I should, I should have carried that through.
It says statement analysis, too, on here. So I can see, but I have, I'm picky about it. So I always add the S because it is two statements. But anyway. So any more discussion? Okay, it's been moved to accept the Community Library Network financial statements for June 2022. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the audit engagement. And Amy, would you like to?
Sure. So this item will be out of order in your packet. I apologize because we have forgotten to add it to the original agenda and I usually go in the order of the agenda. So I should have realized that we were missing that. So at the end of your packet should be the audit and engagement letter. So each year when we approach our auditor for post quote to do the current budget, then that kind of starts the conversation for engaging them for our next fiscal year audit. And so the audit will commence after our fiscal year. Typically, it starts in November. I think she, I think they have in here the start date of November 14th. And then they usually have completed their work by the end of January. So this is, does need to be approved by the board because this is a fiscal requirement. Both, I mean, that's something we should do, but then it's also a state requirement, regulatory requirement. So this, not much has changed from last year's engagement letter. I think as with many things, fees have increased slightly. So we did increase our budget estimate about $1,000 from what we had budgeted for last year. So I think we're budgeting $13,000. And she has, I mean, they have in here a not to exceed, but typically, you know, we're typically don't go, that's the high, high. Any questions?
I thought they just finished the audit and presented it this last month.
They actually finished the audit, I believe, in March, but then we weren't able to get them on the calendar for the presentation until, until June. So yes, it does seem like we just finished, but we did sign the engagement letter last July or August for them. So the process does, it takes forever.
It does. We started the new fiscal year. It takes them two months. It's November, December. They, they finish up in January.
But then sometimes, you know, there's lingering items, you know, sometimes the report comes, you know, that's when they're sometimes done with the.
I'm not complaining. I just explained that's why it feels like it's right on the heels of, yeah, she just gave us.
Well, I think if history is any evidence, they do a nice job. I'm not aware of any criticisms of their capabilities. So I would move that we engage Anderson Brothers to perform our annual audit.
Okay, it's been moved to engage Anderson Brothers to perform. Thank you. Our annual audit discussion. I would like to say that I've looked at it. I read the headings of the paragraph. I skimmed the paragraph and on the way down, I asked Michelle if she'd read it, the whole thing, and she has. I'm like, oh, and this, this is so, this is such tedious thing to read. But it, it is hard to read and some of it is hard because I don't understand some of what they're saying. Anyway, anybody else have anything they want to say?
Just how long have they been doing this? For?
Since 2009. I know that it's very difficult to find anyone who does government audits. That's why we had to find a new person because they, it got very complicated and.
Well, and they have to have under their board, I mean, the CPAs, there's only, they have to have certain certifications to be able to perform this type of audit. And there are very few accounting firms that actually are, I can't remember exactly what it's called, but there are not very many that have those qualifications.
Yeah. That's what we found. Okay. If there's nothing else, it's been moved to accept Anderson Brothers to perform our annual audit. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is circulation.
All I will say here is that we were really busy in June and we have just lots of great responses to start of summer reading. So lots of great programs, but also our circulation was up quite a bit from, from June of last year, but it was also up quite a bit from May as well. So kind of across the board, our circulation, new patrons, door count, et cetera. Really busy.
That sounds good. Anybody else have comments? It would be interesting to compare what would be the last year, 2019, to what we're doing now, 2019. Yeah, because 20, we were, we were into COVID. We were shut down. It'd be interesting to know where we are in terms of those numbers. I'll bet I haven't cleaned my stuff out. I, I have such a huge stack of library stuff. I bet I could find it.
And I didn't compare that necessarily for June, but in the spring I started doing that. And we had at least three locations that were even higher than that month in 2019. It was Harrison, Pinehurst and Spirit Lake, I believe. And then Athol for one of the months. I think I'd spot checked two or three months. But yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at that. We have been doing that periodically and I know youth services has been using 2019, you know, as, as a guide as well. But I think we're, we're getting there in many ways.
Okay.
And in some ways past that.
And I know I don't always comment on them, probably because our agendas usually have so much on them. But I really do appreciate seeing the numbers every single month and seeing our, you know, the, the physical items, circulation and obviously the programming. I think it's, I always do review it and I think it's important to keep your finger on the pulse, so to speak, as to the usage. So thank you, Amy.
But the people counter, the people counters always seemed to be a touchy item. Like we couldn't really necessarily count on them or whatever. Do they seem to work?
I mean, mostly, and we have some locations that have upgraded their software and I think that has worked better. We are looking at, and I'll need to check in with Randy on this in terms of who, which locations we've upgraded and which we haven't. But I know at Hayden, we did change and I think that's going better. Post Falls already had an upgrade and then we were looking at some of our other locations as well.
Because I, you know, I sometimes, should we count on those numbers? Those are the, I mean, that's not as good as the circulation numbers. They're more iffy.
I would say, I mean, it still is a door count, you know, that's more, it's not unnecessarily manual, but it does count. I mean, if a kid runs out here five times.
Yeah.
We're counting that.
Five kids.
Because there's not really a way, but it does know to subtract. One, one person comes in, count them going back out. So it's not counting once in and once out as two different people. I mean, so for each person that comes in, it knows that a body will go out as well.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so it's not counting, it's not counting them going in and coming out as to, to visits. Okay, that's good. That's good. All right, anybody else, anything else?
Oh, I just wanted to point out, because I've been kind of tracking it. And it was also in the CIN minutes about Freegal and the unlimited use. And it feels like Freegal's getting used when it was not before. Because we kind of talked about, do we really want to do this? And it seems like maybe it was a good idea that we hung on to it.
And I think we wanted to do one more year to really see, because you know, there were some libraries in the I N one where it really went down and then others that were pretty steady. And we have some heavy hitters. We have a few members that just, you know, they, they get their limit, you know, every week. But yeah, I mean, I think it's something we'll continue to look at as well. Because if they will say it's still slightly down from last year, that's one that did go down.
But now they don't have that limit because you see, did I notice in the CIN minutes that it was, it's become unlimited downloads now?
It's unlimited streaming, but then you still have, so if you want the physical download, meaning downloading to the upper to your phone or mobile device, there's still a limit there.
But they can listen to it.
But unlimited streaming, I think it needs to have a timing on that.
Anything else? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the director's report.
I, I don't necessarily have much more to add beyond the written reports. I mean, I would just say we're well into the compensation study, though it will take some time. But we did have a kick, all day kickoff meeting with the consultants McGrath Human Resources Group. They met with our managers and coordinators. And now we have many staff doing a position questionnaire. This is where they can look at what people are actually doing. So we have the official job description, but now they compare that with what are their actual, you know, duties. And then they're also going out to research comparable organizations. And so some of that was based on feedback that they heard from us in terms of what organizations they would compare us to. They have several libraries they'll be using as well as a few local and regional government entities as well. So yeah, that's mainly where we're at with that. Probably will get preliminary feedback in September, October, which is a little later than we were hoping. But at least we're moving forward. So it does take them quite a bit of time to, partially because what they do is ask these several organizations to do a whole survey. And so it's slow sometimes to get those organizations to respond. They're not just going and pulling necessarily a salary table. I mean, some entities have that published, but they're, they're asking much more in-depth questions, both about benefits as well as some other aspects as well.
How do you like them?
Actually, I, they're doing well. I mean, you know, they, they asked really good questions of in, in our feedback meeting, they've done quite a few libraries and they've done a number of government entities and they work all over the country. So even though they're based, well, after staffs, I think in Kentucky and in Wisconsin, I don't know. But they, they worked a lot in, in Idaho, Washington, Oregon, and all of them.
Do they, was, do they be physically or virtually?
Virtually.
Okay. All right.
And that's really all I have.
Okay. Any questions?
This, this, this was the first, I think, time in our board packet that the name of the consulting company was used. And I'm familiar with that company, so I was, I was glad to see that's who we're using. And I didn't have time to, to look at it prior to this meeting. But I do know from experience with employment related claims that if you have used a reputable company such as McGrath to review your salary schedules and tables, it can be helpful in litigation, helps insulate you from wage claims. So this is a good step that the library has taken.
They had no idea you were that resource. Holy mackerel. That's good. That's good to know. Anybody, anybody want to say anything else? It's a shame that the number, that, it doesn't surprise me. I thought it was ambitious to think we'd get numbers early August from these guys. But, but it's a shame it's not going to come in, you know, before. But, you know, who knows for getting it going? That's great. All right. The next item down, and we are zipping through this, is the Harrison Library Tour. And then we can take a break. On, I was just, Judy wasn't here and she's usually the facilities person. And so I was getting into the whole issue of the underwater creek river that we're over. And good to know. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is budget discussion and that's our second draft. And we will start with Amy, would you like to talk us through first of all, why we?
Yes.
Why we have the other column, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. So we're going to kind of do a walkthrough. We're going to start today and then we probably will finish. I mean, we have time in Thursday's agenda as well. But I know last time we just kind of hit a few highlights. We didn't really go through each, you know, each section. But one thing that I pointed out in the package is that based on kind of our financial committee's recommendation, we have added a third column, which is 2%. So there are three scenarios being presented, 0%, growth only, 1% plus growth and a 2% plus growth. And the 1 and 2%, the differences there mainly are with a variety of different facility projects, which I'll point out as we go to, to each section. Right now, what is currently an estimate is the item in red in the upper left-hand corner, which says estimated growth amount. That's right now, we're estimating it at around a hundred thousand. We, that's the final number that we'll get next, early next week. So when we meet on Tuesday, the 26th, we should have our final growth numbers there. We also hope to have line item seven, the urban renewal. We, there may be some additional revenue there, there may not. But we should also hopefully have those numbers as well. So.
What's the green one?
Oh, yes. And so I was just getting to that. So, so the item in yellow on line item seven is just, we don't have anything there yet, but we may, there may be something there next week when we have those final numbers. The items highlighted in green are things that are different from the first budget draft. So this is budget draft two and the items in green are basically the differences from the first draft. And we can kind of walk through what those are. Some of those were, we just received better estimates. So and then some of those were, you know, as we found out how some of the just higher costs that we're seeing just in terms of across the board, that's hitting things like our collections and our office supplies. Those things have been higher than average. And so we did do some, some changes there. So in, in the revenue, basically that's where we're at, the three scenarios. And then right now, what we don't have anything, but we may have something is line item seven. Tax has also been a number that has fluctuated some. This year we've gotten much more than we estimated in our budget for sales tax. So we did, our sales tax, we're anticipating for this next year to be 225. That really is just an estimate. If things really tank in terms of the economy, then our sales tax could actually be lower than that. These last two years, we've had much higher than what we estimated. But right now that was kind of the, as we do all of our scenarios, that was kind of our best guess there. And then some of the others, those are a little more kind of, don't change too much from year to year. We did lower our interest income because as noted, that's been below, below our budget estimate. So we did put in a lower estimated interest income in line 15. Our grants, so lines 12, 13 and 14 are always estimates. But those are also in and out items as well. So those, as you see below in lines 39, 40 and 41. So if we get higher grants come in, then there would, that would be reflected in those expenditures going out. Any questions on the revenue section?
So I, in looking at this, that going all the way over to the left for FY 22, the estimated actual is 5,877,000. So each one of our proposals for the, for the coming, for the coming year is, are considerably less than that.
And, and that's for a couple of reasons. So this year we're estimating that sales tax will come in at 262. I think what we had budgeted this last year was 175,000. But with the predictions for the economy, I don't know that we should estimate 262, but I also don't think 175. So that's why we did feel like we should go somewhere between the two. We also received quite a few grants and donations. So if you look in, you know, lines 12 through four, well, particularly lines 12 will be the higher than what was budgeted. And then we also, at least in the FY 22 estimated actual, we do include funds from CARF and carry forward designated for income, which in the budget scenarios, and we'll talk about that, are on the balance sheet. So, so that's why, you know, though probably those are the few areas in which, why our budget was, or our estimated actual was higher than any of the other, the three budget scenarios.
Good, thank you.
I'm just speaking to the sales tax. Wasn't it observed that our sales tax went up because we had quite a few people from Washington coming over and shopping in Idaho where they didn't have to wear masks and, and things. And so we actually saw a bump in our sales tax. And that's, I mean, I hear you on, the economy may decline. But also I don't think we can assume that we're going to have as many Washingtonians coming over and shopping in northern Idaho. I mean, maybe our sales tax is a little less, so that's still a draw. But anyway, that was one of the reasons why we saw the sales tax go up.
I had a question about lines 13 and 14. So why are we expecting those to go up from last year and they already were, well, yeah.
So I think this is, we've budgeted 15,000 for CLN friends and 10,000 for Post Falls friends, about that much the last several years. Sometimes it's come in higher. And here for 2022, we're estimating it to come in a little bit lower. But right now that's an estimate because we have three more months of the calendar year still left. So, so we are estimating just because the asks to the friends have been a little bit lower. I would say the last couple of years. But if we go back and look historically, that 15 and 10,000 have been more like what, what the friends have, have donated. I mean, we could, but again, those are in and out. So then if we get less, those expenditures will be less in lines 40 and 41.
Those are kind of placeholders, aren't they? We have to have them there because if we get money in from a grant, from either grants or from a grant from the friends or from, from a grant from either the friends, then there has to be money in there. There has to be, they, they have to have a placeholder in there. You can't create it in the middle of the year. Is that correct?
Well, and, and we do a placeholder, one to know, know that we have those line items, right? So that they don't just appear mid-year. But also if we do get, you know, significant increases in those, then we would do a budget hearing like we've already done. You know, an additional budget hearing like we did in, I believe it was January where we received additional income. And so we've done that sometimes for not just sales tax. We've done it sometimes for large donations, grants that were larger than anticipated or anticipated.
Those are strictly, strictly grants, strictly grants. And then on the expense page, it's got the expense for the grant.
Any other questions, any other questions on revenue? Okay. And if we go to expenditures, I'll kind of just, unless we decide to do it differently, do it in sections. So salaries and benefits, I'm going to actually have us look at the, the second handout that's along with the budget, which is also in purple. And right now, what's on page one is really just a breakdown of our different positions, how many staff are in each position, the wage range. This right now, nothing has changed on, on this first page from what was presented with last year's budget. We do know that once we have the compensation study findings, that we will be coming to the board with some recommended changes. But as of now, we don't know what those changes will be. And so this is just keeping those ranges as is. But now you can see for each salary, I mean, for each position type, you know, how many number of staff we have in that position and then what the current salary total is. But if you go to page two, this kind of does more of the aggregate breakdown. So because we don't know what those salary corrections, I mean, salary recommendations might be from the compensation study, we are asking for 135,000 to go towards our market corrections. And then for those positions that may not, because we may have some positions that are well within market. So if there's no changes there, then we're proposing that they have what's been fairly traditional last few years, the 2%, 2 to 3% merit increase. So that, but that's included in the 135,000. So you can see there, so we have the total salaries. We have the anticipated market corrections for 135,000. And then the second column is the 87% reduction. This is where, because we have, well, two, two things. We have hourly staff that do not have any paid leave benefits. So if they miss a shift, then that's six or eight hours that we, that they don't get in, ended up paying for. But so what we've noticed over time is that that's roughly about 87% of the total salaries. And so we don't budget at the full because one, we have people that get sick or take time off. The second thing is if we have vacancies, so that 87% also helps us estimate that there, we know there'll be vacancies. We just don't know for how long or what that number will be. So we take the total salaries at the scheduled hours and then we take the 87% of that to then get our, our salary numbers. And then you'll see the various benefit breakdowns as well. And you can see what, what, what we have right now is the FY 22 approved budget. So you can see what was in last year's budget. And then over to the right is kind of where we anticipate we're coming in estimated for the year. We have had a number of vacancies. Well, I should say, we've had a few vacancies that have been harder to fill. We have other positions that we've become vacant and then maybe within three to five weeks, we've replaced those. But we've had a few positions that have stayed vacant for quite some time. So we are coming in under our, under budget for, for salaries for this year. And then at the very bottom, we do in addition to the 135,000 for market corrections. We do have a few proposals for some staff changes. The first one, this would be a brand new position. So we're, we're asking for a 28-hour position for an adult programming assistant. Right now, this is just put into the budget because it's a brand new position. If it gets approved, we would then come with a job description at a future date, so to speak.
You're saying it is in the budget right now?
Yes. So, so in that 87% reduction of total salaries, that position is in there. This would be a position that right now, we have one individual who does adult, coordinates adult programming for the whole district, our adult programming coordinator. This would be a position to essentially add on to the work of our adult programming coordinator, so adult programming assistant. U Services, we have several district-wide positions in U Services, adult programming, we have one. So, and, and that person's not even full-time. She's 32 hours a week. And some of the early both survey data and what we're seeing out of the strategic plan is that adult programming is an area that we do need to expand and grow. And so we think this position will be really beneficial to allow our adult programming coordinator to do more of that strategic planning of adding offerings as well as leading programs. And this adult programming assistant could do some of the. And this adult programming assistant could do some of the scheduling and supply ordering and help with our library of things collection. So so that's one proposal. And the next two are really small, just hours additions. In fact, we were technically able to already do that now because they're already approved positions. So this was add five additional hours to two to three positions at Apple and add seven and a half hours total weekly to circulation specialists at Hayden. So that was going to be five positions would get go from eighteen hours a week to nineteen and a half hours a week. And so the last two are again additional, bigger additional asks. One is we've kind of been left with eight hours of a youth services specialist position. Sometimes when we have vacancies in youth services, they rearrange the hours. So at one point we had a youth services position that was Pinehurst and Harrison. And then we split those up and then it was just Pinehurst. And then somebody was youth services at Harrison and then did eight hours at Hayden. But now that's not going to work out anymore. So that person's going to be just for Harrison. So now we have eight hours at Hayden that we are short. But we can't add him to any current position because that would put them into the full-time category without being very expensive. So this would be creating a twenty-four hour youth services specialist position. But we just need sixteen additional hours, if that makes sense, because we have the eight hours that are already in the budget have been in the budget for some time. And so this is adding sixteen additional hours to that. And then the last one is another brand new position. So again, if approved, we would come with a new job description. We are looking for a part-time graphic designer for our communications department. Right now we do outsource to to a few different entities. We've had some marketing companies. We've had a freelance consultant. When you use consultants, it's really expensive. They're charging way more than what it would cost for an in-house individual. So ideally, we'd like to have somebody in-house that could do some of this work, one, both quicker than if we're outsourcing it, and then also really just help with some of the professional, you know, some professionalism to to our designs. And so this would be again nineteen and a half hours for a part-time graphic designer. Estimated on this one, and I guess I should have said that for the adult programming, this is maybe somewhere between sixteen to seventeen dollars an hour. Again, that may depend too on what our market study says. The adult programming assistant would be about sixteen to sixteen fifty an hour because that's comparable to we have a youth programming assistant, and that's the salary range for that position. So I think that covers kind of the additional staffing asks along with the compensation.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so the the new or the adult programming assistant, you mentioned that the adult programmer works thirty-two hours a week. Now, going back to what that the library employee said last month, is is the adult programming position right now, does she want to be full-time and she's not because of the cost?
This is actually one, this individual was full-time a few years ago, and then about two years ago requested to go from forty to thirty-two hours. So if this individual ever leaves, we would probably hire it at a forty hour.
Okay.
Because it has benefit, already has all of the benefits because it's thirty-two hours. It has health, paid leave. So this isn't quite as much of an ask as somebody who's in the twenty-hour range.
Okay, I see.
Twenty hours.
And then the other one, and I have no idea, I'm just throwing this out there, the graphic designer, is there any internships from like NIC graphic programs or?
Yes, and actually, this actually helped spur the ask is because we actually, for the first time, had an intern for a semester, and she was fabulous. And we were like, oh, this is so nice to have somebody who's in-house doing that. In fact, this individual has finished their internship and then has been one that we've done some freely, has done some freelance work. So we could look at future interns. But sometimes some of those internships are paid versus free. This one we happened to get through Spokane Community College, though the individual lived in post fall, so it was perfect for for her and was a free internship. So we did get that that free labor, but it does sometimes mean reteaching kind of our branding standards and all of that each time if we are, you know, every three months or four months, whatever a semester is. So that's certainly an option, but ideally, I think it would be having someone in-house.
Oh, my, I, my questions are pretty quick. The, I'm just curious as to why or the thought process between going from eighteen hours for existing circulation specialists at Hayden to nineteen and a half seems to be a reason we want to go to nineteen and a half. So I just wondered what that is. And then the graphic designer, that would be a a new position for the library, correct? So would we that that would, we'd have to create a job description that brought to the board for that?
Yes. And that's what I had mentioned earlier is that if approved in the budget, then we would come forward with a job description. But if it's not approved in the budget, then then we're not going to create, you know, but I mean, we currently have a short summary, so we can certainly. That's not quite a job description yet, but was kind of the justification for for why that position. The reason, I mean, so nineteen and a half does seem like an odd number just in general, but that so anything over twenty hours is Percy level. So the expense for that. So so that's with the circulation specialists. Basically, the ask from Hayden was is hey, we could use a few more hours a week, like we're getting much busier. We could use just five to seven more hours a week. I think technically the ask was was a bit higher, but when we looked at the numbers and we wanted to keep Hayden and post falls fairly equitable. And so post falls is technically the busier library. So we didn't want to, right, give them more hours than what we had to post falls. But this gets them closer to to post falls. And so this was giving them seven hours, but they where they had room to grow is that eighteen to nineteen.
And you did say for the adult program, adult programming assistant, that you'd create a job category. I just didn't, I wasn't sure that you said that for the graphic designer. And now that you're saying that twenty hours and above get benefits, that's reminding me as to why there are so many positions that are nineteen and a half.
Right. And the twenty to thirty hour, the benefit level there is just Percy. Over thirty hours, it's paid leave and medical dental benefits and all of that. And and ideally, so so some of these are part-time positions, which again, if we looked at the staff survey, we certainly are looking to grow more full-time opportunities right now. And if we were going to create a new programming assistant, that would have added a lot more to this budget. So this is one since it was brand new. Maybe start with twenty-eight hours in terms of see what that helps with adult programming. I think that can give us quite a bit. Because now that department will have one twenty-eight hours more a week than they have currently. With the graphic designer, again, it would be, you know, we're not sure we have enough work for a full-time graphic designer. And again, that would be a much bigger cost, you know, be like from fifteen thousand to forty-two thousand, you know, would be the the difference there. But as we are growing some of these, we are looking for where we can do that. And that's certainly still the ideal. But some of these are to get some of that started and to see where the need is, you know, to meet a need now, but then see, is there really a future need or not?
This, you touched briefly and maybe a little bit more on one of your questions at the beginning, which was the pathways for people to move into. And that has been something that the satisfaction that has been expressed by staff and a concern that's been on the board at the board for a number of years. And certainly that came out in the survey. Is that correct? Yeah, it seems like it. It seems like is the compensation study looking at that? I mean, I thought that was part of what we were looking at.
That's part of what they're looking at. I think overall, you know, at the core, they're looking at compensation and benefits. But they are looking at, you know, our level as well. So some of what may come of that out of that is more general recommendations, like, yes, you should have more full-time opportunities. But then we need to then look at, well, what departments does it actually make sense at a branch? Not picking on any one branch, but at Spirit Lake where they're only open thirty-one hours a week, it may not make sense to have three full-time people there because that's not even they're not open even forty hours a week. But a post falls in Hayden where you know, we're open sixty hours a week, we can certainly use that. And there's a number of part-time positions. So so some of that will be I think we'll see general recommendations come, but then we need to figure out where does it come from? You know, I mean, both where does it come from budget-wise, and then where do we need it? Both where does it make sense? And then also keeping things equitable and a pathway, I will say, is something we definitely want to create. This year with doing the compensation study, it's almost like we created three full-time positions this last year, which was more than had been created in the last three to four years. But now we're doing the compensation study. So it's almost like we also need to pause for a second and pay our staff better before we start creating more full-time positions.
So because the question I had is we've had that eight hours with youth services specialists just hanging there. Why have we not? Is is there not room for full-time or would eight hours not bring a person up to full-time? Why didn't we designate those eight hours to an existing employee?
Well, a couple of reasons. So it would have, right now, most of the youth services staff, if they're not already forty hours, which we have three to five that are forty hours, is the rest of them are twenty-eight hours. So if we were to add the eight hours there, then it would add the medical and Percy and already you services is already an area where we have a lot of full-time and we have other departments that don't have very much full-time. So I think ideally we have some of those full-time positions in first, I should say, not that we'll never create another, but but.
I'd also say that some of the staff that work fewer hours than you services don't want extra hours.
Okay, well, that was a question.
There's moms who need time to take care of their kids, things like that.
Thank you.
In fact, we've had a few of those youth services staff that had, you know, went from twenty-eight hours to twenty or even from forty to twenty-eight have given up hours. And that's sometimes how we end up with odd numbers is like, well, we need twenty-eight hours of coverage and somebody just gave up eight hours.
Okay. So other areas would be the focus for full-time?
I would, yeah, if we're looking at where we have full-time positions now versus where we don't.
Okay. Do we, and we still offer help people go through M L S to get an MLS. Is that correct? We haven't had anybody want to do that for a little while, have we?
So we have, and typically we identify, we have room in the budget, usually one a year, you know, where we'll support the tuition towards their MLS. We had one in the budget this last year. Somebody did for an individual, but that individual ended up getting other calendar, if it was like a grand or didn't need that last semester covered by us. But going forward, we got a new ask from someone who just started their MLS program. So it is in when we get to that, I think, I can't remember that. I'll point out the line item when we get there. But we have.
And it, and it still, if we support them, then they are indentured to us, right? For two years or something like that.
We do say that, yes, I mean, then they need to work for us two years post MLS or we say refund. Yeah, or pay us back, essentially.
Oh, okay. And and typically we've had people stay. I think that we've had people stay. I guess I just wanted to address that particular issue here.
I mean, other, yeah.
Yeah. So you said it would save money to have an in-house graphic designer. Does that mean that we're going to reduce the marketing department budget?
I think what we're looking at there, I think, is what we'd like to do is is essentially marketing has been an area that has been underfunded generally. You know, we do budget twenty-five thousand a year, which for an organization of our size is is not a ton. So I think, yes, it would save us money there. But what we're looking at, and particularly this came out from both the what we heard at the community strategic planning retreat and what we heard in the community survey is there is a lot of awareness that is lacking per se in terms of some of the services we offer. So so I think what we're proposing is that we keep that position static, but that some of the savings from hiring a graphic designer would allow us to do more with the existing budget.
Other questions or? Look at me.
I'm waiting for your next words.
Other questions? Okay, no, no other questions, no other concerns, no other things you want to talk about today?
Okay, actually, there is something. Now that I remember, but it's back in the revenues. When we talked about possibly putting the the cost of like colored prints, you know, raising the cost for
Oh, copy machine.
Copy machine. Is that, is this the time that I should be bringing that up again? Because it is in the revenues part. And I know you passed the revenues already, but.
Just looking at that because you had mentioned that. And I just looked at that in the financial report and I was like we're making more than we budgeted last year.
So we are making more. People are using our copy machines at very high levels.
Oh, okay.
And we know why.
Why do we know?
Because paper is so expensive. Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I would say, yeah, we, so for for two years, when when there was various aspects of closure or only curbside, we were under budget here. But yes, we were over budget this last year because as people anyway, yes, people are using our copiers and printers quite a bit. So that's a heavily used service.
But you're suggesting, oh.
Well, I would like to know how much we're paying for ink and paper compared to what is coming in from ink and paper.
So we can, I don't, we'll have to do some research, but we can certainly look into that. And then I know we'll be discussing the budget of the next couple of meetings. I don't can't guarantee one out, but we'll work on that.
I think it at least should be a wash. I mean, I'm not saying there should be a profit necessarily, but I don't think it should be a loss.
So, yeah, what's the cost of?
And if we, if in order to make it not at least a wash, it requires raising prices. Don't we have to have a public hearing for that? Yeah, I think you do, just even those ones. Not that that's a big deal. I mean, that's.
Right. But if we did decide that it wasn't a wash and decided, okay, we're going to raise it color from twenty-five to fifty or twenty-five to thirty-five, whatever it is, then yes, we would do a a hearing.
So it's a little bit separate just from a budget. It's got a whole nother process.
But we can, we can do that research.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, I know this is a topic for a later day, but just when it comes to you know, the those charges, I mean, the way I look at it is if you have the means to get copies and color prints, you're probably not coming to the library. So I think because it's a that the public's used to to have access to copies, I don't know that that the library shouldn't be subsidizing some of it. I'm just, I don't know.
So that's what I have on salaries and benefits. If we want to go through some of the other sections, or I know we'll be talking about this again on Thursday. So Katie, want us to keep it to four oh three?
I want to have fun. And we have a little bit more time. If you'd like to talk about a little bit more, I do want to talk a little bit about Thursday.
I can cover like the one more section if you want.
Okay.
All right, okay. So we'll look at programs, materials and services. So as kind of mentioned earlier, the green is what's different from budget one. There weren't, as you can see, kind of our estimated actual, we did in lines twenty-eight and twenty-nine, adults and children program, those are reduced slightly. But that's because we actually created a new category thirty-three for emerging technology programs. This area is really growing with our discovery bus, but did not have its own budget. So was sometimes borrowing money, so to speak, from from youth services and adults. And so as we grow kind of that that STEM and workforce development and all of the things that are happening under emerging technology, we felt like it kind of had reached the point at which maybe we should have a new line item for that and track what's being spent there. So they ask to start with is four thousand. So they asked to start with is 4,000 and then we did reduce slightly adult and children's programming by 2,000. But last year we had increased both of those a little bit. So it's, it's still more than what they had two years ago, I should say. And then some of the other areas are staying pretty, pretty static. We did reduce, so this last year, for the first time, we had a libraries of things budget, but we were actually overestimated on that. And we are continuing to get some donations of those. And, and we had quite a robust collection to begin with. So we reduced that from 10,000 is what it was this last year, and so it's at 5,000. Let me see here. We had some increase in our software budget. That's just continues to be some of our subscriptions have increased. We also are looking at one new software that would help us with our website. Website accessibility is kind of a big issue. So this is some software that would help us with auditing accessibility of our website. So, you know, is it? Does it meet those ADA requirements, you know, for, for a website?
Were the, for the two new, did you guys, I don't think you were sure for when they talked about, I had no idea what ADA accessibility to websites meant, you know? I mean, it just went right over my head. I can't, when they started talking about it, of course, blind people, like, of course, you know, I know that's exactly was like, oh, great. And there were, there were other things of reading abilities and stuff like that. And there's a whole bunch of ADA stuff that goes into websites that I wasn't aware of.
So our, so our webmaster has found a really good both software services. So it's, it's added to our software, but then also a company that would do some professional services for, for this. And it's fairly reasonable. So there's an increase there for that, but mainly it's been our subscriptions have, have increased there. Any new software? Forgot. Okay. And then we, as I think we mentioned last time, we did already get our approval for our E rate. So our internet access and telecom are already, you know, we're not coming in high and then gonna need to reduce those. We already have those items in there. And then our office supplies do continue to be high. Basically, those are, that's one area where we see cost increasing. So we didn't increase it by much, but it's about 1,300 over our previous budget draft.
Is that where the copy machines that the public uses?
That would be everything. So it's paper, it's paper towel. I don't know, not, it's not paper towels, but it's paper, it's toner, but it's also pens and pencils and things that our staff use office supplies wise.
For staff, but also for the public, for the public stuff.
All right, I had a question.
Yes.
Mount lines 36 and 37, those are the two that get the E rate.
Yes.
So why does it say fiscal year 22 estimated actual is 180 and 10,219? But what you're asking for next year is massively more than that.
So if you, and I'm sorry, what I don't have in front of everyone is our fiscal year 2022 budget. So we have the actuals in there, but typically we receive the E rate, which is the federal approval. The state is something that varies every year and we sometimes get reimbursement for some of that from the state and sometimes we don't. So this is one where we have continued to budget like we might not get the state reimbursement because there were years we haven't. Now, E rate, even though we've gotten that almost every year, I think there was maybe one year going way back. But the state really depends, theirs does come from the federal, but the programs vary every year, you know, what they're going to cover and how much they're going to cover. So that's been an area that's fluctuated quite a bit more. And so last year for line 36, we budgeted, oh, actually. For line, sorry, because we added a new line, they don't match up from last year's budget. So just a second, the internet access, we budgeted last year at 11,000. And that's about what we're, or we're doing less than that even, we're doing 5,900. And then the telecom, we budgeted last year 75,000, even though the actual is coming in at 10, and so we're budgeting 54. And again, those are just based on the state reimbursements that are much more iffy than the rate.
And I have a question going back to the emerging technology programs. Who came up with the 4,000 because that just seems low compared to the other, you know, like the adult and children's programming, and I know it's so popular.
It is popular, but it's also it's like our adult and children's programming. We have staff doing it at every building. And so we're, we have like hundreds of programs happening in adults and hundreds happening in children's. But with, right now with emerging technology, we have two staff.
Okay.
And so, so right now the ability for them to deliver those programs is limited to.
Okay.
There too. Now, sometimes they'll have things that they can push out similar to what you services does, you know, maybe with kits or so forth. But right now, you know, if we're looking at mainly what's popular is kind of those in-person programs. So we're starting with.
Okay.
And that was estimated did come from Nick.
Okay.
Anything else? I was going to go back and talk for a minute. I hope. This is more confusing. Back on salaries, where what we put in the budget is we figure out what 100% of the salaries would be and what we put in that is 87% of it. That was a large discussion that went on for a long period of time. We used to put in 100%. And when Bob came on as a, as a, he was adamant that we changed that because it was unrealistic. And what happened was then it left a whole chunk budgeted money for that, that was. And we haven't had a problem since we budgeted at 87%, have we? I don't think so.
No, no. And I mean, in fact, that 87%, I mean, sometimes it's still a moving target, but that's a good, if we look back historic. I mean, you will see this year we are going to be even under that 87%, meaning under that number.
It left a big chunk of change that was undecided. And so it didn't, it, it wasn't, wasn't, it wasn't clear to the public how it was being spent. And so it works, it seems to work. This, this seems to work. So he was right. We have to, it was nerve wracking. It was scary to do it. We, nobody wants to come in, not enough in the staff salary, but it seems to work. So, okay. If nothing else for today, then I will talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing on Thursday and why we divided this up a little bit. Judy's schedule is determining this to some degree. The only meeting that Judy was able to make was Thursday's meeting. She has a humongous amount of family that come, that comes from some of it, from some of them from Europe and are visiting her. So so given that, and then, I don't know, I'm hoping I can explain this well. Next Tuesday, we also have a budget. We also have a budget meeting because we don't get final numbers from the county until next Tuesday. Is that correct or Monday or Sunday? Monday.
But then we need time to pull it all together.
Yeah, right. So we always have this quick, this very fast budget meeting in order to, Amy needs the board to vote on a budget, budget that will be published. And that's a very, very limited couple of line budget. And where there will be examples at that meeting showing what it is. At the meeting on Tuesday, there will only be four people. And she has to have a board vote for that. We have to come to some, we have to come to some conclusion about where we're going to do that. Four people leaves us in the possibility of a split board, which is a tie is a nay. And we need a yay on something. So on Thursday, we have the whole board. What we're going to be doing is voting on one of these columns. Then when she gets the final numbers on Tuesday, we'll still meet, but she will be able to put those final numbers into a column that the board says. And you will see, and that budget that we publish does not lock us in. Our final budget is actually in August, but we have to have something that's reasonably close that we publish.
You're talking about these columns, the zero.
Either the 0% or 1% or 2%. And then we'll make a decision on which ones we're going to go for. Then when, we'll still have our meeting on Tuesday and she'll show us where they got plugged in. But we won't have a full board there to vote on it. And so we'll do the voting on Thursday. And it doesn't lock us into something. It's not like approving a, a final budget, but it is one to be published. And it's, how does, what is it? The lines are very, very.
So typically, there's about five or six lines that'll be in the published budget. So it's, it's, it's revenues and then it breaks expenditures down to like personnel, operating, and then I think grants and donation, you know, something like that, you know? So, so it's very brief and we'll have the examples of what our published budget looked like last year compared to our actual budget last year. So you can kind of see that. And then, yeah, and then the other thing, well, Katie, maybe you're going to talk about the other reason we're meeting on Thursday is the consultants had Thursday, the strategic plan consultants had Thursday down over the last two months on their calendar.
Yes, I mean, they were immovable. Okay, any more, anything from the financial committee of any stores? Not yet. Okay.
Other than Bob, it's going to be here on Thursday.
Yes, and you're going to talk to him and we're hoping that Julie will be there as well. Apparently he met, he and Julie met with Janelle to begin to help her understand our budget. Is that right? That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry, one last thing, only because it had affected the revenue column. If you did not notice, we did move a couple of the revenue items from draft one to the balance sheet. So we did move those to page three and that was the carve, so the Hayden roof replacement, so about many coming out of carve. Is there under balance sheet line items, it's carry forward assigned to capital project. Oh, sorry, that's the, that's different. So the second line I'm, is that carve assigned to capital project. That will be the roof at 185,000. And then carry forward, we know we are not able to do the. All right, this is the Harrison remodel. Yes, thank you. We're here at Harrison. We had that in this year's budget, but it's not going to happen partially because we need to fix some things first before we can do that remodel. And so we've added that as well, but both of those are not coming out of current revenues. And so those were moved to the balance sheet. But when we do report our budget to the state, they want to know what we spend regardless of where it comes from. So it's important for us, one, to know what our current revenues are. But when we report our budget to the state, they need to know not just what we're spending out of our current revenues, but what we're, we can't spend it out of carve if the state doesn't, if we didn't put it in our budget. So it is here, but it doesn't make sense because it does throw off some of those percentages. It's important for us to know what's our current yearly revenue and our current expenditures. But then some of those items that are essentially coming out of our carve or our extra carry forward would be down here under balance sheet line items. And then we earmarked the capital projects, which we'll talk more about Thursday. But because that affected the revenue section, I did want to make sure to mention it today.
So, so Amy, speaking to Bob's comment from the last meeting, which was that, you know, he likes to track the percentages and it can be helpful to look at the percentages. And because of all of his spreadsheets, it's, I've gotten used to looking at his percentages. So these percentages are just based on incoming revenue.
Yeah, so they're not based on the big carve project, the 185,000 or the additional carry forward. Those are still money that we will spend this next fiscal year. So you all should approve and be aware of that. And the state needs to know that. But in terms of our current revenues and what each category is a percentage of, that's a percentage of current revenues or, yeah.
Got it. And I'm sure I'll still have questions about it because I think one of the goals that we've had for several years now is to try to make the budget as transparent as possible for the public and understandable. And, you know, to the extent that we're accomplishing that goal, I don't know, but that certainly continues to be the goal. And was it mentioned? Because I just want to make note of it if it wasn't and I was looking for it in your director's report. When, when that salary staffing study may be completed.
So we're looking at probably September or October. We were hoping for August or September. And so basically that's why the salary spreadsheet is what it is now. And 135,000 is a guesstimate on our part. So it's very possible they'll come back with recommendations that would be way more than that. But obviously our budget will, the timing for the budget won't match up. So we're kind of like, this is what we could carve out of the budget now. And maybe this will be a two face process or maybe we were close on our estimates and were able to do most of the recommendations. So this was based on some research I had done, not knowing, because both of our proposals from the compensation consultants came in at the last hour. And I thought, nobody's ever going to want to do a study for us. So I had taken several days to do some of my own research that's nothing like what they're going to do. So this really is just some guesstimates based on that.
Thank you. I was wanting to highlight, yeah, where did that number come from? Right, if there are no more questions today, then we'll come back to this Thursday. That's the next item. The agenda is a strategic planning update.
Um, yeah, so all I'll say, because we'll be talking about this on Thursday, is that the consultants took the month of June to take all of the feedback from all of the various surveys and the community retreats. And they have created a draft of the strategic plan. The steering committee reviewed the draft a few days ago. I emailed that actually a few hours ago, so you may not have seen it yet. So it's in your email and I'll have copies available on Thursday as well. But if you'd certainly like to take time over the next few days to, to take a look at it. The draft is in your email. And so they'll be virtually with us on Thursday to review the plan.
Has anybody else tried to open it? I tried to open it and it, a little sign came up at the top said, we're not able to open this at this time. So I don't know if that's just my situation or if there was more to it than that.
I can try resending it to, to you, Michelle, just maybe you can move the test and if anybody else tested, you just let me know.
Well, is this the one she said she just sent out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't tried then.
I just was sitting here and so I gave it a shot.
Well, I think, I don't like, the service isn't real good here.
You should be on the wifi.
They're like, oh, I was pulling up every, because I tested that. I was pulling up anything else I punched on. It was just that, just the PDF part of it wouldn't open.
Okay, I'll, I'll try.
It opened for me.
See, of course, it was just me.
Well, sometimes I'll, you know, if a single, you know, user to user versus a group.
It will do, okay, thank you.
Or try resending.
Did you want to say anything about the steering committee meeting?
Um, no, I mean, other than just to fulfill my, my reporting duties to the whole board, we had a final meeting of the steering committee in which the draft strategic plan was discussed and, you know, more feedback gathered. And I mean, I know you, you haven't had a chance really to go through it yet, but I mean, my takeaway was that they, it's just, it's just really gratifying to see that much community input solicited and then tried to be incorporated into the strategic plan. I thought that they really tried to hear our community. And so since I've been on the board, this truly feels like the first time we've had a strategic plan that has done that. Right, because in years past, we've traditionally just gone on staff recommendations. Because like I think I've mentioned at previous board meetings, I mean, we're not librarians. How are we supposed to put together a strategic plan? So, um, anyway, the, the, I don't need to put the cart for the horse because they're going to present it to us. But I think the, the overall sentiment from the steering committee was that they felt it was a good outcome from the work that's been put into it.
Yeah. There's nothing in that strategic plan that was generated by board. We had, we, we had no. We had, we had no input in that way. There was no, you know, the, the strategic plan was generated because of, with the staff survey, the community survey, the one-on-one interviews that they did with key community members. And the.
The thing.
And the thing, right, the day, the retreat, thank you. And the retreat. And I was, I thought it was going to be more boilerplate. And I was, I was kind of blown away by how well they listened. That they, I, I, it was, having worked on a lot of strategic plans, one of the things that I remember really liking about this company was how much they were going to go out into the community. And they did, and they know, but what another thing was that they knew what they were doing. They weren't brand new with this and it was obvious, really obvious. They were way better, they did a way better job than I expected. I was really surprised. Not that I didn't think they were going to do a good job, but I just, I don't know. I just thought it would be more boilerplate. Anyway, we'll see though. So that's all, that's, you guys have any questions or anything? We'll be on Zoom on, with them on Thursday. Okay, trustee continuing education. And we don't have anything except the iCramp video, the iCramp training that's on Wednesday for open meeting. Is that, I am not going to be able to attend that. Is it, will it be recorded? Do you, do you know?
I can find out. I mean, they didn't mention it was going to, but some of their trainings have been, or sometimes they put them in the portal. Meaning they have a training portal where they put some of their trainings and, but you do need a login. So either way, we'll find out a way or see if they're going to.
But Katie, that's just limited to open meetings. So I don't know that it, I mean, I don't recall when exactly this made it onto the agenda. But I think it was, it was intended probably to be broader than just covering open meetings, the open meeting law. So I, I don't know that that's the reason to take it off. But I also don't know where we're hoping to, to go with it.
I don't either, I'm not either. We, you know, we had, we thought that iCramp might be valuable to us in trustee continuing education. This is one way right now. And that's available to us. We had thought that maybe Jim McNaul might have some other things to offer. This is a good way to, for the whole board to check it out and see what, what we think. I think that there was some concern too, is that he may not understand libraries well enough, that he understands elections. You know, he understands elected officials and things like that, and that's very valuable.
Yeah, I guess I would say there are so many pitfalls that we as elected officials should need to be mindful of. Open meeting laws just being one of them. So, and my two cents would be that we continue to keep this on here, hopefully with the idea that we can identify useful tools for us, you know? Because it's, it's certainly a good thing to know how to, to carry out your position better.
And are you saying that you don't think that this webinar is going to be helpful? I don't understand what you're saying.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. I'm just saying the webinar, I just pulled it up because it's part of our discussion. And it's just limited to open meeting law.
Okay.
And that's just one aspect.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm actually kind of excited to see it because I really have no idea of any of them. So, and do you know how long that is?
I think it's an hour, but it might be an hour and a half.
Okay.
Some, we did one for staff recently and it was an hour and a half.
Okay.
Okay, well, if it's just open meeting law, the Idaho attorney general every year has a big thing. They put it on YouTube about open meeting law. Just watch that.
Interesting.
He has been. Because he's there, iCramp. He has been, he may come up with, he may be, have been involved in some very specifics, some specifics that might be, you know, that the attorney general may not, that he might be more general. Jim McNaul, I know, is on the front line of issues which have been in our community. And he may be able to point out places where communities have, have been challenged. And I, I'm not saying that the attorney general wouldn't. I just know that he's very aware of what's going on in our area as well.
And sometimes having listened to both is, is attorney general is taking the state statute. So for example, in the open meeting laws, technically you don't need public comment. But iCramp, having talked to Jim McNaul, he recommends strongly you should have public comments. So that's some of the experience that iCramp might add to some of the training versus you might see in the attorney general's office.
Yeah, right. He was the one who said, you know, don't. Let, you know.
As many as there are there.
Right, everybody gets to speak. He was the one who said, everybody gets to speak no matter what. He was the one who said, you know, people are going to come in from, you know, there's a, the big deal on shutting down people who are not in the district, you know? And he's like, no, don't do that. So I felt like he was really valuable in that way, in the, in the way an attorney general might not be, you know, in terms of real life experience. Okay, facilities updates is next. Anything?
I don't have much, other than you can see some of what's just getting started here at Harrison. We've talked a little bit about kind of the, the water seepage issue that's, they've been dealing with for quite a while. So we're, we're excited to see some of that work continue. Though there's been various stopgap measures, but we're hoping this will be something that will really.
It won't, I just wanted to give you the history that it won't. Well, water is a power unto itself.
But I think there's been two things. We've always known it's kind of sits on the swamp and the spring. But then, but then there's been some, some water places that it shouldn't be, even knowing, you know, where we sit. So we're kind of hoping to fix that and to also mitigate it before it becomes a true mold issue. And that would be dangerous for our staff and public and so forth. So I'm excited about that. Otherwise, just, there's lots of actually, facilities have been doing a great job on some of our, our plants and flowers. If you've been to like Rathrum lately or Post Falls or even Hayden, they're doing some great work. So just some beautification happening.
And Hayden has new bookshelves that house the new books in that empty area. They came from the Spokane Fall, Spokane County Library System or the Spokane Falls.
I think it was the Spokane Public. They were remodeling a few branches and had a temporary location. And then it's got lots of new furniture. So they were selling off some of theirs are free, you know, for so.
Okay, the other two things are legislative updates and community announcements, which are both usually where Judy is. But does anybody have anything on legislative update? Or a community announcement? We have time for a discussion of future budget requests. Is that something that you guys would, you know, like to talk about?
Did you mean future agenda requests?
Yeah, I knew that. Yeah.
Well, we already talked about the copy machines. So that's, I don't know if that has to go on the agenda. I mean, they were going to look into the, the costs.
Is that a good enough issue? I mean, is that okay enough?
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly if this has to be on the agenda or if it's just something that.
Going to be happening.
Talk about for the budget. So I don't know exactly how that works.
But they're not paying attention.
Well, we can certainly bring it. Like I said, I do, I'm hoping I could, but it may take particularly working with Kerry, who orders a lot of the supplies, but also with Mark or IT in terms of some of the stats and usage and so forth. So it may take a little time, but we'll try to get it as quickly as we can.
Just seems like it's a natural part of a budget discussion. You know, that, that just seems like it's, we can incorporate it into this year's budget discussion without making it a special topic.
Yes, so we'll bring it as soon as we can, hopefully in one of the next two meetings.
And then what was the other one? Yeah, thanks, I'll turn the button off. Anybody else? Remember, come to me.
Uh, yeah, just, you said that it, we weren't going to have the discussion during the public or the response to public comments about if there are any books that are sold out that would be minimal.
Is that a, an agenda request?
Yeah, just for a discussion.
Okay.
Just like, what should we do about books that encourage child prostitution and things like that?
So this is such a natural topic to put under the discussion of the collection development policy, which is going to be starting in September. And. It, it's, it's, it fits right there. What does our policy say? Because this is a, what you're talking about is a policy issue. You know, what does the boards, what is the board's policy? What does it look like? You know, we have these concerns, where does it fit in the policy? That's what, that's where that is. And the reason we, I requested that that be moved to September. Vanessa had requested this agenda item. And I said, could you wait till September? Because we had strategic planning and budgeting and it was summer and vacations. And I, so that was, that was my request was that we, and that's how the board would change this. That's where the board would have the discussion is under, what does our policy look like? What does our policy say?
We have like a five-minute discussion, just an initial discussion on it. It won't take that much time.
We can set a time on it. It's, I'm, it's, I think it's a big topic, but certainly we can push on the agenda.
And I don't know if this is how agendas work, but what if like under this discussion of future agenda requests, if there was what you plan to put on the agenda? And then like say, I, because that's the other one I was going to bring up. I won't forget that we talked about it and that you were going to put it on in September. I don't know if that's something you can put on an agenda, you know, the future bullet points we're going to hit, if that's appropriate or not. But it would save from people forgetting that it's already been set. Is that something that can go on an agenda?
Sure.
I don't know. It's kind of like here, the, you know, like the next meeting schedules have like, you know, what is on the back burner? But like I said, I don't know if that's how agendas are set up.
There is no doubt that the policy needs to be addressed because it was last addressed in 2018 and it says it'll be done every three years. So it's, you know, I, I just, I didn't even ask you guys whether you want to address it or not. It said, it says we will. And I just said, can we do it in September? It was as soon as that we could do it. So I feel kind of bad because I didn't say, I, my suggestion is, I was just like, yeah, let's do it in September. We've got to do it. But I like the, so we can put down here, future, future, we can expand this discussion of future gender requests. And we can put items that will be on the future, then this, and then the date.
If, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that that sounds good. Then people will remember that that will be there. Judy has a request for a board self-evaluation. And I've also, that, that's, that's a tricky one, also a tricky one to know exactly what to do with. And so we haven't quite got a date for that. And she needs to be here to talk about what she wants concerning that.
And I just want to go back because I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding Rochelle's request. Um, so, because the board, we're, we're policymakers. We are not involved in the day-to-day operations. And my personal feelings about content of particularly, of particular library books is irrelevant. So I want to be sure I understand if it's, if it's an appropriate board level discussion. That's what I'm not getting.
It's real appropriate in policy. If I, I had quite a bit of concerns, okay? I went to Amy and talked about them. That's where I wish you guys would go initially, at least. I mean, that's what I sat down and I, I had, I had my own concern, but I don't bring them here. I take them to the director first. And that's what I did. And we've had a couple of discussions on it. So, you know, when board members have concerns about what is operating in a library, what is under the director's jurisdiction, they go to the director. That's what I do. That's, I think, what you're supposed to do. Because it's not our job to pick a book out and say, this, this can't be on the shelf.
No, it's, it's partly a PR thing, it's just the way that we appear to the public. And if we're losing trust and our reputation is suffering, then that, that's an issue.
And I hear you, Rochelle, and I want to cultivate public trust. I mean, that was in our strategic plan, is still in our current strategic plan. And I would like to work with you to figure out a way to accomplish that. But, but a litmus test is not, is not the way to do it. We need a way to educate the public about the role of the board as opposed to the role of the library. And, and there's just a whole misinformation or miseducation or, you know, the words that you have used with us before. And, and maybe, I don't know, I'd be happy to kind of try to brainstorm the issue because I am concerned about it. Clearly, we have members of the public that are concerned about it. And I'm not, my comments aren't to say that we shouldn't address it. I'm not saying that. I just want, we need to address it appropriately, as, as appropriate as a board.
That's true. Right, we, we govern via policy. And so at least the discussion can be happened here, at least the discussion can happen there. It, it, you know, there isn't, it isn't that it isn't, you know, but for us to thrash it out here isn't a board, it isn't, you're right. It is not a board issue. We govern via policy. And that's how we establish. But I think that the issue needs to be talked about among people. Oops, sorry. I haven't come up with any great answers for the situation. I don't think that I sit here thinking this is all so wonderful. You know, it is, it is a very difficult, a very difficult issue. I was talking to a young woman in the pool who had, well, a woman in the pool who homeschools her kids. And I, she was, and I thought, yeah, okay, I don't know. You know, so we were, we were chatting and then she was asking me what I did. I was talking a little bit about the library and I said, yeah, the library's struggling right now. And I said, the library probably has something in it to offend everyone. You guys have heard this. And she looked at me and I thought, oh, I'm gonna, you know? And, and she said, and it probably should. And I was surprised. I was very surprised. I didn't say anything else, you know? But the issue that it, that there may be areas that are more challenging for a community or something that really needs to be talked about, and this is obviously a challenge in this particular community. So we, as a board, we can talk about it under policy. But talking to the director and asking her what she's doing or talking together, I wish you guys would get together and talk about it. Come up with a great solution. Would you like, I don't know, we, you, we, we can have, we can put something down here for the agenda and then the board can decide, we can decide if we have time when Judy's here also. I think it's only fair to have the whole board here.
And possibly maybe it could, it even somewhat fits in the strategic planning discussion. Because I think our reputation in the, in the public is a part of the library, obviously.
Do you have a wording for an agenda item?
Um, no, I was just saying that it, it kind of can be folded into possibly the strategic. Um, no, I was just saying that it, it kind of can be folded into possibly the strategic plan, like from the retreat that was held. Marketing was a subject that kept coming up and, and, and this idea that it seems like some, well, not some, but definitely a huge segment of the population does not necessarily understand CLN and our role. And I mean, there's just a whole that is ripe for us possibly addressing through the strategic plan, maybe.
And I will just say, you know, in terms of the question of reconsideration, whether there's a book awful enough, I mean, the reconsideration process is part of the collection development policy. There's a whole process there. You know, there's a whole paragraph or two that talks about the reconsideration process. So that will definitely be a point at which we'll be discussing that process quite a bit.
Yeah, and is it possible to have two separate ones? One, reconsideration policy for children's books and, and then the regular collection? Because I think the wording, and, and again, I'll point out, and you guys all know, that all the issues that people in the community have are about children's books. Nobody's coming in and talking about adult books. It's the target that is hitting the children right now. So I don't know if you can have separate policies so that the children's could be a little more strongly worded or not have so many hitches in the, you know, like the actual federal law. Because I know you can't discriminate against certain issues for adults, but for kids you can. Like pornography and that kind of stuff.
Well, I think that would be up to the board to decide whether they want to separate that out. So when we discuss the policy, I mean, I think, can look at that. But I will say, some of the handouts that we've seen in the community, some of them are listing several adult books, one that aren't even owned by either us or the Coeur d'Alene Library. And, and so it is carrying over to adult books too. And, but most of the, you know, but I think sometimes there's a lot of misunderstanding because they're saying these books are being handed to children and they're adult books in the libraries that do carry them, which are some libraries in our consortium, but not us. And so I think, but I would say that that would again, be up to the board, that process.
There are books that are too horrible for the library and they don't get purchased. They don't get purchased. I mean, that, I mean, to even have a book in the library, it goes through a certain amount of filtering to begin with. We don't buy everything.
So what you're saying then is that the book that encourages child prostitution has passed that test and is okay?
I don't know. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say.
I am not, I am not saying that. I would like to say that. I am, I did not say that and I am not saying that.
Well, and I, I wouldn't say that either. And if we're talking about the book that was read at, at last month's board meeting, this is again, where context does actually matter because the author of that book has taken in children and created nonprofits to get kids off the street. And, and she's fostered kids and these are, some of these books are based on those foster kids' experience. And so she has written those books to deter kids from drugs because there's one book in that series that's about meth use and there's one book in that. So I, I think context does matter. I mean, she's not writing the book to tantalize or for period interest, but it is to, it's hard lessons. Now, whether that applies to many people, hopefully not, right? I mean, because that's a horrible, horrible issue. But I will say, we've had teens attend our teen programs that live on the streets and have suffered from sex trafficking. I mean, these are not things that are not happening in this community. And so this is again, where the, the library does use our policy, you know, to guide us. But we're also looking at the full work and the context.
So they're not easy issues for any library. There's several, there are several books about libraries right now about the chap, how challenging it is. And it is, it, it, it isn't, people think it's easy. People think the library's easy, it's not. Anyway, do you, did you have a, a topic that you wanted to put down that the board would then vote on of whether it goes under the agenda?
Um, well, I think we just kind of discussed it. Yeah, I guess when we do the materials policy, that would be appropriate. And also the strategic planning, bring up our reputation and trust with the public.
Okay. There's, I think that, weren't there, weren't there issues of?
Yeah, and actually, before we move off, the discussion of agenda requests. And I don't know, I don't know if this is the time to, to bring it up because it was, it was an executive session discussion.
Yes, we, yes. Okay. We haven't finished, we, we, we haven't finished salary discussion concerning the director. And in talking about that and in planning, thinking about a special meeting at the beginning of August after we've looked more carefully at our salary. And we thought we might, there might be, or I thought there might be some more information from the compensation study.
So are you saying we'll have a window of time to continue the discussion that we started in an executive session prior to the budget being finalized?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes. We can put that as a topic for Thursday's meeting when Judy's here and look at a calendar time for a special meeting for that. Because we need, we need it, that number has to go into the budget. All right, anything else? Any, okay, special and regular meetings, we've got that. And when, I, I just hesitate to do anything, do any kind of meetings with Judy. But that will be one, we'll put on the agenda special meeting for director's salary. Okay, is that good? Yeah?
Yes, thank you. Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I still move.
Okay, it's been moved to adjourn. Move to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you all for coming. Thank you, Lonnie, for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
I didn't meet you, Emma? Is that right? Yeah, oh, good.